Deliberate an act on CYFD agreement number 16-690-18434, juvenile justice program.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, I would have Mrs. Antonucci address the proposal here with you.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, in your packet is, I believe it's like a 25-page contract that we received from CYFD. This is their standard boilerplate and very similar to the one that we approved last year, but what you'll notice is they were approved for an increased budget this year, and I believe that is on page. If you turn to page 15, they were awarded $72,000 this year, and the award for the next fiscal year will be $128,418. So you will see under "Other Costs," there's $6,100 listed there, and that will be the administrative costs, reimbursement to the city of Raton, that I can claim my time and efforts as a part of the grant. So we were successful in negotiating that this year. With that, there still will be a 40% minimum match, which is done in kind. It does not require a cash match, so that would be $51,367. With that, I would request your approval, and they'll be running the programs the same as before. You'll have the Girls Circle, Boys Council, and the Restorative Justice Program. And if we choose to subcontract this with Soy, then we would have to approve that contract probably at the first meeting in June.
And I would just add that I think the increase is a testament that the program is a good program, is working well, and the hard work of everyone that's involved, including our City Treasurer, works very hard on this program.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Antonucci?
I'll move that we approve the agreement with Children, Youth and Families Department.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Trish, can we have a real call vote please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sagata?
Yes.
Deliberate an act on resolution 2015-18, April 2015, financial report. Mrs. Antonucci still with the floor.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, in your packet is the financial report as of April 30th. You will see that our ending cash balance was significantly improved this past month, and that was due to the receipt of the Small Cities Assistance, which we did receive more than we had budgeted. But I did insert a word of caution in there to you that tax and revenue currently is reviewing all of the distributions, because at a meeting that I went to a couple weeks ago, some communities didn't get as much as they had gotten last year, so they actually got less. So we will wait to receive a final determination on that from them, but that is included in your ending cash balance. So as a result, your available cash as of April 30th was at $888,530. You will see that grocery receipts, unfortunately, per what we budgeted, is still showing a decrease a little over 4%. So that's been causing us some concern the last few months, and kind of has dictated how we're going to finish out the end of the fiscal year. And so we are being cautious and watching our expenditures. We only have really four weeks left in this fiscal year, so it's always unfortunate when you start the fiscal year not meeting your projections. So I think, and obviously with the power outage, we might not realize some GRT from yesterday, but so I'm not sure. We won't see that check for a couple months anyway. But let me see if there was anything else in the notes. So I did, you know, make a note that because of the decline in our GRT, that that's affected how we've moved forward with our budget projections for the next fiscal year, and so we will continue to operate as conservatively as possible. In your packet also is your cash flow report, the GRT report, and then also the bank reconciliation report. I did make a note that all departments in the general fund were operating below budget. We were 10 12ths into the fiscal year, which is 83.4%, and we were operating at 78.38%. So is there any questions regarding the reports we've provided?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2015-18, April 2015, financial report. Second.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sagata?
Yes. Deliberate an act on 2015-19, budget adjustment number nine, fiscal year 15. Mrs. Antonucci?
May I go?
Go ahead.
Okay, budget adjustment number nine mainly consists of line item adjustments, so the net increase and decrease in the general fund is zero. However, if you look to the sanitation fund, we did do one adjustment that would come out of reserves, and that's just to budget some additional funds for the legal expenses regarding our landfill lawsuit. And I did make a note that we do have a RFP currently out for legal services. So with that, I would request your approval of budget adjustment number nine.
I'll make a motion that we approve adjustment number nine, FY15.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sagata?
Yes. Deliberate an act on budget adjustment, Raton Public Service. You going to be up on that, or Dan going to be up on that?
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, we're here to present this item. This is part and parcel of ordinance 942, which has language in it regarding reserve levels, and as a result of our recent audit, the auditor certified these changes in budget adjustments. And that effect is these amounts roll toward cash in the capital improvement fund.
Any questions for Mr. Barry? No questions.
Not for me.
Ms. Schuster, any question?
Probably a longer list than that, based on ignorance of the subject, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve budget adjustment for Raton Public Service.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sagata?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Action item G is deliberate an act on budget adjustment. Nope, let's go on here. Deliberate an act on resolution 2015-20, adoption of the fiscal year 1516 interim budget.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, City Treasurer, Mrs. Antonucci, have spent a lot of time working on the budget. We have made some revisions, I think, out of a conservative sense, given the news of some layoffs regarding Pioneer. So we have taken a little extra time, made some adjustments to try to be safe with that. Of course, as we've talked about, the biggest thing that funds the city operation is grocery receipts tax, and predicting what's going to happen with grocery receipts tax is a little dangerous, and a dicey business. So we tend to look at what's going on in the community, and what we see right now is there is construction projects, which there is grocery receipts tax paid on, going on within Raton. I think when we look at the 4% below budget from last year, the thinking probably was that some of that construction would take place in this current fiscal year. And what happens there is it's not unusual that a construction job will get delayed, or plans will change on that. So I think that we'll see a lag on that, but we will see that happen in the upcoming fiscal year. And the biggest impactor there is this South Interchange project. That's a $10 million project. And so I think that we might see that catch-up in the next fiscal year, that 4% that was projected. We may see a gain on that, but I don't know that there will be $10 million construction projects within the city limits in years after that. So that project is underway. It's fairly reliable. The hospital project is getting close to being done. It'll be done in July. Other projects are fairly reliable, but you always have to be cautious about factoring in construction projects. And then secondly, as we talked about, the impact of a job announcement like we saw with Pioneer. We don't know what that will be. We'll try to take other steps to protect the community there, but that's what goes into the thinking on the budget. So Mrs. Antonucci has done a lot of work right up till today, working on this for you. We think we have a conservative budget, and I'm going to let Mrs. Antonucci answer questions you might have, but address specifics with this budget. I guess the other unknown is the cost of insurance, specifically health insurance. So we plugged a number in there, and we won't find out on that till we go down the road a little bit. And I would point out that this is the interim budget. We will have another measure coming up for a final budget as we go along. So with that, Mrs. Antonucci.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, we're here before you this evening. As you know, the deadline to submit an interim budget is June 1st. So if approved this evening, we will make sure that this gets into DFA by the deadline. As City Manager Barry mentioned, we did make changes based on feedback that we received during the last two meetings. We had a draft before the budget at the last meeting, and so we did take feedback from that meeting. And so we did decrease our projected pay increase for non-union employees to 1% in order to be conservative. And we still are projecting a 12% increase in health insurance. And as he said, we're not sure if that's too much or not enough. So I think whatever changes we make between now and July 31st will be dependent on where we come in on those health insurance quotes, and we probably won't get those till late June, early July.
I guess one question I have, and I'd address you, Mr. Barry, if those rate increases cut back and say they're more conservative, like maybe 6%, would we then relook at perhaps giving more to our employees at that time, or?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, you know, we've talked about this concept of having a one-time revenue, like the Small City Assistance, which is not an indicator of what might happen in subsequent years versus continuing costs. And so, as you know, a lot of the costs with the city, probably about 70% are related to personnel, and those are continuous. And we would just, depending on information that we would find out, come to you and try to give you the data and, you know, accept your feedback. But while we want to have, you know, a good satisfying employment for the employees here, we also have to kind of factor in what might happen. And what we're seeing are some one-time revenues, and we're kind of unsure on the recurring revenues. So that gives us a little caution.
Well, I'm proud of the way you guys are handling this with the uncertainty, the one-time that we get, like the Small Cities Assistance. I like the way that you're erring on the side of caution with that. I really do. So kudos to you. I think that's the way it should be approached until such time that the grocery receipts match what we're protecting. But thank you for your work on that.
And just so you know, we, I don't know if it was, was it in this budget? Hold on. One of the items that you just approved in the budget adjustment that I didn't point out to you, but I'll point out in the budget as well, we did have the $3,000 for the Tiger Grant application that was discussed at the last meeting. Now, that did come out of these line item adjustments that we made, but it was included in this budget adjustment. So I just wanted to point that out. But as far as the $12,500 that we discussed at the last meeting, and that's not coming out of lodgers tax. We felt that it was probably more suitable to come out of our economic development line item out of the general fund. So you'll see in the budget that you have before you, we've budgeted the $12,500, which would be the matching funds for the ANTRAC grant, only if it's awarded, but it would be coming out of the general fund. So I think that would be appropriate, as Scott was talking about one-time hits to the budget. Those are the type of things that we would probably recommend spending the money on. But that is in this budget.
Do we have the possibility of some one-time methods of providing incentives or to reward employees who are doing a good job, if we had extra money in the budget?
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, being a public agency, we're very limited on something like that.
Right, right.
Very, our hands are basically tied on that concept.
If you're referring to the term of bonuses, they're not allowed.
Yeah, I was...
Trying to avoid that.
Trying to avoid that term, right. Yeah, I didn't think those were allowed, but, you know, maybe we can buy them a birthday cake or something. We want happy employees, but...
Did anybody have any specific questions? I'm sure you've all spent your whole weekend reading this 200-page document.
Till the lights went out.
Yeah.
You know, we've spent some time discussing budget items in previous meetings, and I think we're fairly consistent with the discussion that we got and the feedback that we received from the commission in putting this together. And we're conservative on our revenue projections, specifically the grocery receipts tax, and, you know, expenses fall into line with that.
So like we said, we have till July 31st to submit a final budget. So I mean, if you're looking this over and you have questions, Scott and I, you know, are available to go over anything with you. And then we could even have further budget workshops between now and July 31st if needed. But we'll kind of wait and see where we end up. The end of the fiscal year is June 30, and so we'll kind of balance everything out and roll in those beginning cash balances and make adjustments from there.
My concern is the insurance rate that we have, and that's kind of flexible, as you said, so we'd have to watch that, I guess.
We have to watch that, and, you know, if it came in higher than our projections, we'd have to come back to you and talk about that. And so we're probably looking at, or hit on reserves at this point. Now, we had talked about what's reflected in there. We want to get a little bit aggressive about fixing some streets. And so we've laid out the program, the proposal for street construction. That's reflected in the budget. And many of these programs we have going are associated with grant funds, so they're underway. And hopefully we see quite a bit of construction through this year and into '16 as well, maintaining some reserves there that we would use for leveraging as these funding opportunities come up.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2015-20, adoption of the FY1516 interim budget.
I'll second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Is there any other discussion? Trish, can we have a real call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sagata?
And then Tricia has the resolution for you to sign tonight, and I'll submit that to DFA with our final budget.
I thought those fell under the city's entire budget. So can we have a separate motion to approve?
If that was your intent, and you approved all three, we could do it. We just didn't discuss it. I just wanted you to be clear on that. So yeah, if that's what you're approving, that's fine.
I have no problem with that.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Just as a point of discussion, I attended the county's meeting this morning, and their insurance, I'm not sure who they are, theirs went up 3.3%, but I think they're... They did, but it was actually, they went up only 3.3%, so...
They have stayed in the mix.
Right, so, don't know. Item H, deliberate an act on award of contract for improvements to the O.P.A.S. Gallery. Mr. Barry?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, I would point out that this is a little different. It's not a sealed bid. We requested written cost quotations from contractors to do work at the, what I call the Wells Fargo Building, located on Upper Street, city-owned building. And this is phase two of an improvement program. Last year, you had approved a contract to re-roof the building, because we had leaking roof causing problems inside. So that part was completed. What we're proposing to do under the current phase, there are windows with wood trim on this building, and this is a historic building, and that wood is very aged, so we would try to retain this original wood, but do some work to restore it and keep it from aging, protect it. There's repairs to stuck oak on the building, and we've had a problem with drainage that comes off of the roof and goes into the crawl space. And so we've got some improvements to try to seal that up, keep that water from going in the crawl space, and also add some ventilation to the crawl space, because that's been a particular problem. So you see that we got two written quotes. We also got a third that was a no bid or no price on there. So we have our three responses from contractors. And the low-priced $20,500 received from Archuleta Construction, I would recommend your approval of that amount, $20,500. We write a contract with Archuleta and get them started on the work. And I would point out that the funding, as it was last year, is from the non-promotional funds of lodgers tax receipts for this building. And I would point out, we will address things like this in our procurement policy, which we're putting together to bring to you at some point here. But we will get your feedback on what amounts would you like to see come to the commission for approval, or what amounts would you like to see do administratively and develop a policy on that. So probably typically, this purchase of $20,500 may not require commission approval, but it's, to get you thinking about that, it's the amount that you want to have come to the commission. So that's inside from the recommendation for, you know, award of the contract.
Any other questions for Mr. Barry?
Some of the work on this building is just the framework around the windows, or?
Right, right. You know, some of that old wood is cracked, and so we would seal those cracks, repaint all that, refinish that woodwork at windows and door frames. And by the way, might not have mentioned, but we did hire Alpha Design to do both phases of design work on this. So they had put out the bid package and then the design work.
Any other discussion?
Make a motion on award of contract to Archuleta Construction, an amount of $20,500.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item I, deliberate an act on bid award for Tiger Drive Mill and Overland Project.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commission, we've talked about Tiger Drive. We do have a municipal arterial project funding in place in agreement with NMDOT. And we do have the project engineer, Karen Sterns, from Engineering Analytics is present. Engineering Analytics had put out a set of plans and specifications. We've received one bid from a local firm, WM Sarrazo Company. And I'm trying to find the total amount here. So the bid that we received, $208,7580. That's, we would probably dip into our gas tax reserve to fund over the amount of the grant award, but we recommend your approval of this bid. It's difficult in the area when you have asphalt, an asphalt-type project, because there's just not a lot of contractors that would bid a project, especially at a $200,000 level. That's rather low for asphalt. So we appreciate getting the bid and getting it locally, and my recommendation is for award. If you award this tonight, we'll move rather quickly to begin construction of the project. And the timing on this is, we hope to complete it when school is adjourned, and we don't have the school traffic there. And so that's happening this week, and we will try to move forward with construction rather quickly. And if you have any questions for Karen, she's here. She can answer the questions on the ground.
I have a question for you. Is the school going to put up a share of this, too?
The school is. The school has contributed $20,000 to the project.
Is that included?
That is included.
The gas tax is about $33,000.
Thirty, so, I don't, Mr. Phillips is our project manager, might address the commission also, but we would need about $33,000 out of gas tax, in addition to the school share, DOT share, and our required share under the grant, correct?
Yep, in round numbers, a little under 33K. And that would include the design professional services and the NMG RT on construction. All that totals up to somewhere around 246.5. We got about 213 in grant money, so we'd go to gas tax for the balance there. There, as you can see there, Karen has proposed a couple ways that we could shrink the funding by eliminating some pavement markings and such. But the thermoclassic markings or the thick markings that you've seen on South Second Street, they're a better quality mark than our painted marks, and I think it's worth the extra money to include those in it. And since it is two-way traffic, to stripe it, you know, those are pretty essential.
What is the, are we looking at the whole Tiger Drive or just part of it?
No, just the western half from the railroad right-of-way up to Letton Drive.
How close to the railroad track is it? There's a squat down, and it's pretty rough. It's been pretty rough. Is it going to...
We'll, we'll do some patching in that area, but if, as you drive Tiger Drive, if you look at the curb, where the curb and gutter ends, that's where railroad right-of-way begins, and that's where our project won't encroach any closer to the tracks than that on either side. Once you get into that right-of-way, you have a lot more expense with, you have to have signalmen and stuff on hand. The permitting would be an entirely different animal, so we've avoided that.
Now, we had, you know, we have an issue here that the east side of Tiger Drive, we get, most of the comments we get on streets are related to Tiger Drive, and it's pretty rough. And the east, east of the railroad tracks to Second Street, that's not included in the project, and we don't have a plan... And we don't have a plan for that section currently. Raton was written into the capital outlay from the legislature for $150,000. And as you know, that's gone away. It's not going to happen. So we'll have to find another way of resurfacing that part or apply for additional grant funds for that section. But that's not included.
Any other questions for Mr. Berry or Mr. Phillips?
I don't have any. Make a motion to accept the bid award for Tiger Drive Mill and Overlake Project.
Motion in a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Thank you. Passes. Item J, deliberate an act on Colfax County Vector Control Services Agreement.
Mayor Protim and Commission, we're talking, when we say vectors, we're talking about mosquitoes. And the county has rethought their, their strategy on mosquito control. They have taken ownership of equipment to spray. They have hired someone to run this equipment. And they have asked all of the municipalities I understand in Colfax County. And they're asking City of Raton if you would purchase the insecticide or the larvicide, whatever product we use and is appropriate, to spray inside Raton. So that's the agreement. We have estimated that the cost to Raton for purchasing this would be $3,000. But I would caution you that we don't have good data on what that cost has been in the past. That's a little bit of an estimate. And it looks like we're heading for a wet summer, which means more mosquitoes. So I would say if we are wrong on that, it's probably higher and we could be wrong on that. So we may come back and ask you to increase that $3,000. But this agreement says that you would purchase $3,000 of material. The county supplies the labor and the equipment to do the service.
Do we, do we have control over choice of the pesticides or does the county do that?
We do. I think we would want to talk to them and, and try to find the pesticide that's right for the application. And I know there are a couple of choices there. There's a couple of things to think about. So I think we would have a conversation on what's right for the application.
This money come out of general fund?
I believe it is, except for general fund. Do you know if that's where we put this cost?
We created a new line item in our public works department called mosquito county assistance, $30,000.
It's not something that we've had a cost on before. But honestly, in the last couple of years, the service has not been very effective. And the county saw the need to, to just improve the way it was done.
Well, last, last summer, I remember the amount of complaints we had, especially around the Little League fills and everything. I make a motion to accept the vector control agreement with the county.
Kill those little beesters. I'll take it now.
Make a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Item K, introduction to the LEA ordinance. I will remind everyone that we have had one, a couple of meetings on this. We've made some changes, thus we have to reintroduce this and go through the whole process, correct?
That's correct, Mayor Protim. So we've made revisions, brought it back. This is an introduction of something, a revised LEA ordinance that we have talked about before. And at the, at the last meeting, we did get, I did receive feedback from the commission and from interested people that attended the meeting. And I tried to turn that into something. And it's, the app, the revision is all concerning 153.35 Raton Economic Development Board. So the existing ordinance has a provision for a Raton Economic Development Board, which is staff members of the City of Raton. What we've done here is we've retained three staff members. But it would be a seven-person board. So the three staff members would be the city manager, the city treasurer, and one of the managers of Raton, City of Raton Utility. And then it would be, in addition, four members, which would be appointed by the mayor and the city commission. And so we, we discussed who those four would be. We just say here that it would be four people. And that could be designated to a group that's particularly involved in economic development. We had talked about the potential of appointing a high school student. And I think that would be the commission's discretion to see how you wanted to go. A more of a policy issue, as was stated at the public hearing. Now, I did state in here that we may try to appoint subcommittees. And those would be subcommittees, something similar to what we're doing now. Those would be targeted to a specific industry or a specific development sector. And let's say, for example, something regarding the airport. That would allow us to have a small committee with airport people, people knowledgeable in that particular sector to sit down with us, bring their knowledge in for a specific goal. Or it could be related to the shooting sports or firearm accessories. We could get people in the community that had specific knowledge of that and form a subcommittee to work on a specific project. So we have a provision for that. And then you see the, the appointment here. And I do see one typo that I'm going to have to change because we did make this similar to other boards. And so you see a reference to another board in here that we will have to make a change on. So got caught up in the cut and paste there. Everything else is the same as we had looked at previously. The language, the new proposed language is in red. And as you'll remember, we really need to pass this LEA ordinance to be eligible for the state LEA funds. And the other changes reflect what's required to, to meet the LEA statute that the state has adopted.
I'll just remind everyone this is an introduction, no action to be taken. If you have any comments or questions for Mr. Berry, we'll give it this time.
I like the way you, you dealt with the suggestions from the last meeting. I feel some good thought went into this, I really do.
I have no questions.
I have a question. Item number L, deliberate an act on lodgers tax board recommendations. In your package, you'll see three recommendations from the lodgers tax board. Mr. Berry, would you like to open them?
Mayor and Commission, I was not able to attend the lodgers tax board meeting on May 20th. I, I wonder, Ms. Tricia, if I could call on you to give us a briefing on the three recommendations that we see here?
Sure. The first one is for Raton Main Street's First Annual Gate City Music Festival. They will be having the big name, Deena Carter, performing Karen Raton this summer. And they actually requested $12,500. They were approved for $10,000, and that's the recommendation to you. The second one is for the 37th Annual Romeo for $3,000. And the third is Music from Angel Fire, $2,500. And these are all contingency fund requests.
Now, Mayor Protim and Commission, I would add that Raton Main Street has stepped up to be the sponsor of the music festival. A lot of people have participated in the planning of this. And Will and Crystal Yates have been to town to participate in planning. They're generally on the phone to help plan this. They will be in attendance and perform. But a lot of work has gone into this over many months. And you know, it's the first annual. And so every annual event, you really have to build on something. And you have to be dedicated to doing that over, over years and seeing it grow slowly. So I really want to thank all of the people, and there's a lot of them, that have participated in the planning of this. I think that's the sort of event that Raton really needs. And that's why we have lodgers tax funds. I think events like this, as we've seen in other towns, if you dedicate a few years to it, the growth will really take off. So you know, you start out sort of small, but we do have a good music festival planned. As Tricia said, we have some pretty notable names that want to come to Raton and play here. And I think this is the thing that's worth investing our lodgers tax funds to. And this, this could be a big signature event for Raton. Now, I would point out that the request was $12,500. I think the funds are available. If you want to consider that, that's your option. The lodgers tax board did recommend to you $10,000.
As of right now, the balance is still in the contingency fund, a little over $32,000.
After the amendments?
Before.
Before.
But that's just until the end of this fiscal year.
That's the fiscal year.
Diane would like to speak.
Sure.
I'm here for Raton Main Street. And I thank you, City Manager Scott, for that comment. As he mentioned, we did ask for $12,500. And it is taking a lot of seed money to get this event off the ground. It's going to be a really large event, Labor Day weekend. And as lodgers tax pointed out at the meeting, that it's just their recommendation that the city could approve the 12.5 here at the meeting. And they also mentioned that there could be surplus funds that the city could allocate the other $2,500 from. That was just a comment from the chairman. So I just am here to advocate for the 12.5 because it is going to take a lot of money to get this event. And like Scott mentioned, there are a lot of people involved in the planning and some big names coming to town. And we hope for it to grow every year to make Raton a destination on Labor Day weekend. Thank you.
I would recommend that we fund the full $12,500 or something.
I think all three projects that are listed there are good projects for our city. And I, I would like to approve all three of them.
I'll see the $12,500.
Yeah, I'll go for the $12,500.
Sir?
I would like to point out as a nitpicker that it is not first annual, it is inaugural. The inaugural event as opposed to a first, first annual, which is grammatically incorrect.
Do you know the?
Better, I'll go for the $12,500.
Can we modify this here?
Yes, we'll incorporate that. And we'd like to, you know, express clearly your intent and your motion. I mean, we have that part, but the funding does.
Make sure that we're increasing this to 12.5.
I'll make a motion to accept the lodgers tax board recommendation, but to increase it to $12,500 for the First Annual Gate City Music Festival.
Inaugural, inaugural.
Was paying attention, was I?
Here, we have a motion to.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Item M, deliberate an act on a revised MOU between the City of Raton and the Raton Chamber.
Mayor Protim and Commission, the MOU is an instrument that is in place now. But the discussion has been that it really lacked some terms that were important to the lodgers tax advisory board, for one. They wanted to see something more in the way of performance standards in the, in the agreement. And just in the office here, we've wanted to better define the financial reporting aspects of this MOU. So I would tell you that the MOU is in place, it's probably been in place for quite a while. You have a draft of the MOU. And in red, again, are proposed changes to the MOU. So if you approved the memorandum of understanding, it would go into effect in the new fiscal year, which starts July 1st. Now, we do have members of the chamber present tonight. And I think they would like to address the commission in regard to the agreement. And I don't want to speak for them, but I understand they have looked over the agreement. And it came down to one issue, and that is on the front page here, B term. And that wording is from the old agreement. And if you look at it, it's kind of vague and we're not sure what that means. So I've taken a crack at a revised paragraph B, which I'll give to you. And I just came up with this after the power came back on, so the chamber has not looked back. And I might try to get them a copy and give them a minute to look that over. But the intent is that we would execute the agreement. It would be effective starting July 1st, the new fiscal year upcoming. It would run for one year. And then we would be able to renew that over several annual terms. Now, I know that the MOU was discussed at the lodgers tax advisory meeting, but they, as a board, did not send a recommendation to the commission either way on the MOU.
Do we have any comments from Representative of the chamber?
At the last meeting of the chamber board, we did give tentative approval to the memorandum that our city manager has now conformed to our one request regarding the term that the date reads June 30th, 2016 is the ending date of the term. I see there no reason why the chamber could not use the actions taken already to initiate the approval of this document.
Any comments, questions? Why don't we, what you call, again, a motion to the, to the.
So moved.
Have a motion, we have a second?
I'll take it.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? This time we'll take a vote. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Opposed? Same side? Item number N, deliberate an act on consideration for groundwater monitoring proposal Gordon Environmental. Mr. Berry, I believe you made the request that we postpone this action.
I did request that we postpone the consideration of this tonight. I still have some questions for Gordon Environmental on that, on that agreement. And by the way, it's, it's not going to be in regard to groundwater monitoring. It's going to be into services related to the reclamation of the landfill. So generally, this proposal has to do with an agreement with the environment department. And this stems from a meeting that myself and Jason Phillips attended in Santa Fe about 10:00. 10 days ago, where the environment department, Solid Waste Bureau, said they were prepared to approve our closure plan. That would start a clock, which they would give us 180 days to complete the work, and we would retain Gordon Environmental for professional services related to the work. So, we probably want to get this to you as soon as we can, the June 2nd meeting, but there were some issues with it tonight to go forward with it, so I would ask that you postpone it.
I would make a motion that we postpone this item. Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Postpone. Mr. Barry, do you have a report for us tonight?
Mayor Protem and commission, I did meet today with Matt Miller. He is a field representative from Senator Tom Udall's office. He had traveled up to attend the dedication of the solar array there at the Springer South, came to city hall, and we spent about an hour talking to Mr. Miller. We talked about issues that are going on in Raton. We had pointed out the issue on pioneer reduction in force, and it's something that may have an impact on Raton. We talked about what's going on in the medical facilities, that the construction of a rural health clinic is coming, close to being completed, and there's consideration of behavioral health facilities here, and we had talked about the education building, that the deal with Highlands, that we had told them that we're trying to get a post-secondary education facility off the ground, and we talked about the elementary through high school education as well, and where we're at on that. So, we covered a lot of ground, and Mr. Miller said he would communicate that to Senator Udall, and we would have ongoing contact on what's going on in Raton. Mr. Miller was pretty excited to see the plans in the First Street, the South First Street area, specifically the multimodal and the Great Blocks project that's going down there, and that emphasized the importance of Amtrak to a community like Raton. So, Mr. Miller agreed that Amtrak's a very key component to where Raton is going. Incidentally, I also met with Paul Hadle, who is the field representative from Senator Martin Heinrich's office, so he was in town as well for the dedication of the solar array, and we went over basically the same list of issues that Raton has, and Mr. Hadle said he would communicate that to Senator Heinrich, so we've got communications going with his office as well. Jason Phillips and myself have met with George Radnovich and Phyllis Taylor, as well as Raton Main Street. They are staff from Sites Southwest LLC, and they are completing the downtown master plan that's being completed through Raton Main Street. They stated that they will schedule a stakeholder and community meeting in Raton in June, and there will be an effort to let everyone know when that stakeholder meeting is going, and the elements of the downtown master plan, and they're looking for as much public participation as they can get in that. Also met with Robert Loftus. He is a consultant with MRWM Consultants, and he's working on the Great Blocks Plan. He's trying to complete that by June 15th. He spent the day in town, and we looked at some of the elements of the Great Blocks Plan, and I would tell you that we put some of the preliminary drawings that we received from him on the, on the board out in the lobby, and I was pretty excited about some of the elements that they're proposing for Great Blocks now. I would tell you that there's not construction money in place currently. This is a plan, but we have a lot of optimism that there will be some construction money materialized once the plan is completed, so we'll have to pursue that and obviously bring some match, but this is that momentum-type project in the First Street area. And in regard to the multimodal project, we have requested bids. We would open bids on June 30th for construction of the multimodal project, and it would come to the commission for award on July 14th. So, that is out there now, and we're hoping to get a lot of bidders looking at that project. I would tell you that I plan to go on June 27th, 2015, to a New Mexico Municipal League meeting in Albuquerque, and this is for the Finance, Intergovernmental Relations, and Taxation Policy Committee. So, if you have some feedback that you'd like to put forward in regard to policies regarding finance, intergovernmental relations, and taxation policies, I'd be happy to talk about that and pass that along at that committee meeting, and that's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Any items, any of our fellow commissioners? Any more business to come before the commission tonight? With that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.